Thank you for coming this evening. Called a meeting to order, we have all council members present. Our pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilmember Eric Jensen and opening remarks by Councilmember Diana Anderson.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our dear Father in heaven, we are very grateful for the opportunity that we have to gather together as citizens. We ask that thy spirit be here, that we will be able to listen and hear and understand those items on the agenda. We pray that our loved ones will be safe while we are away. We also ask a blessing on those who are on call right now, public safety and public orgs, who are keeping our town and citizens safe. We say these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Are there any changes to tonight's agenda? Counsel, any changes? All right, we'll go ahead and entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Make the motion to approve tonight's agenda.
A motion by Sid, second by Diana, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Okay, it's now open session. I've just been asked to make you aware that the items about protocol for city council meetings have not been voted on, and so they are not going to be addressed or implemented until the first or second meeting in January.
It's on the agenda for January 5th.
First meeting in January for the council to consider the changes that we discussed last week. So we don't have those to implement this evening. So we would ask you to just reconsiderate of one another as far as your time goes on comments. Yeah, I think we've covered it. So it's an open session now, and if anyone would like to speak to the council on an item that's not on the agenda for an open discussion or a public hearing, you're welcome to do so now. And there are some items on here that people probably want to express some thoughts on, and we don't have those listed as public hearing or open agenda items. So please go ahead and feel free to adjust the council at this time. Just state your name and address, and Kathy will record that.
Genesee Batista, 32 North, 1300 East. I just had a couple of clarification questions. So on the 10, item 10B through 10E, it's not listed as public hearings. Are you taking public comment in that section?
So on the public hearing part, I did address this with staff a couple days ago, and...
If we're talking about, are you talking about the trails?
Yeah, all the trail stuff.
Yeah, so item 10B, C, D, and E, where all the public hearing was held on the planning commission level.
Okay.
For the purposes of tonight, there's not. So if people want to address that during the open session, it would be the appropriate time.
Okay, so they won't be able to speak during that item at that time?
As currently constituted though.
Okay, excellent.
Anyone else?
Hello, my name is Christopher Williams. My address is 845 North, 100 East. And I wanted to talk about the rules or the rules of order and procedures of an open meeting, you know? That was discussed last council meeting. It wasn't open to the public last week, so I just wanted to express some things that I feel. First, I'd like to thank Diane and Ben for voting for the citizens. I really appreciate that. I'm an advocate for citizens' rights, and therefore, because I'm a citizen, I appreciate I wanted to say a few things about respect and disrespect to those regards, you know? I guess everybody has a different tolerance of how they feel disrespected. Maybe someone feels disrespected for something rather than other. I do admit that there's been some disrespect during these meetings, maybe from the citizens, maybe from the council. I think the disrespect was mutual, I could say. Another thing I'd like to say is that, one thing I feel about respect, how I've always been taught, is respect is something that is always earned, okay? It's just not something freely given. I do want to say something in regards to something that happened in a meeting about a month and a half ago with an applicant that was standing right here at the very podium. And I felt, how should I say this? I felt there was some support for him. I felt that there was some persuasion, which is okay, but I also felt that there was a little disrespect. And I also feel that the applicant felt that way too. And I think we've got to be very mindful of that in those regards. And I feel like, I feel like, I'm trying to say disrespectfully, but as a citizen, I would like to be, make the council feel accountable for those actions. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Michael Butt, 936 North, 1420 West. I want to address this issue in what may appear to be somewhat an unorthodox manner, but I promise to be brief. In the year 1913, this nation, in a moment of purported crisis, decided that our founding fathers were flawed and misguided about what is known as the Great Compromise of the Constitutional Convention of 1787, wherein the true character of republic was manifest by designing a Congress divided by those directly elected by the people and those appointed by the states, thus creating a barrier between the passions of smaller groups and solid laws that protect the whole, in the hopes of avoiding critical decision-making during the tempest of the moment and seeking patiently for the perspective that comes when calmer waters prevail. So clear was their intent, they devised to have members of the House of Representatives serving only two years, while senators would surpass even the president, serving for six. In 1913, the passage of the Seventeenth Amendment trampled the embedded genius of our founders, forever entombing a critical check and balance, and has left us swirling in the hundred-year wake of the whims of both sides of Congress, with its shorter and longer terms, being carried out by those who fashionably willed the term "career politician." We have since experienced the passing of laws that would take away property and wealth of the industrious and distribute it to any special interest group that will commit their votes. Conflicts are promoted to such groups through the idea they're being abused on the basis of race, religion, wealth, political affiliation, location, and sexual orientation, appealing to the emotions that will advance preconceived outcomes, such as jealousy, greed, and entitlement. Most distressing of all is to see the attempts to curtail the liberties and mute the voices of the people who oppose the subversion of constitutional law and the wholesale plunder of public monies by government officials. Father Washington warned, "However combinations or associations may now and then answer popular ends, they are likely in the course of time and things to become potent engines by which cunning, ambitious, and unprincipled men," and I will add "women," "will be enabled to subvert the power of the people and to usurp for themselves the reins of government, destroying afterwards the very engines which have lifted them to unjust dominion. Toward the preservation of your government and the permanency of your present happy state, it is requisite not only that you steadily discountenance irregular oppositions to its acknowledged authority, but also that you resist with care the spirit of innovation upon its principles, however specious the pretext." With this national backdrop in mind, I want to localize my thoughts now to the recent actions considered by this council to alter the manner in which the people are allowed to express our voice in local government matters. At a city level, the critical check and balance involves the voice of the people. I strongly urge this city council to deeply consider that all of its actions fall under the scope of liberty and constitutional law, and to seriously consider these actions seeking to limit, diminish, and restrain our voice. At the same time, I encourage my fellow citizens to use this podium in a consistently relevant manner while tending to the business at hand, and to do so as prepared, clear, and concise as possible. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to...
Dale Rowe, 769 East, 1300 North. I was here at that planning meeting last week, and given that these will be closed items and just voted on, I wanted to kind of address 10B through 10E regarding the trails. Last week, in my first question, I asked to view appendices G and H for the changes to the town plan, which were not presented. I don't know if we'll see a copy of those today or for the public to view those, but they were not made available last week, and they were not in the public packet. I looked for them online, and there's not much from the planning commission in the past few months online that I could find. We have concerns, and I speak for Ray Lyons and Scott Van Ider, who aren't able to attend tonight. Ray Lyons, his daughter's mission calling tonight, she's being set apart to leave tomorrow. And Scott Van Ider has been in DC for the past week and will be until the end of the month or just before Christmas. With regards to the runoff, which I feel still have not been addressed, we've been assured, and I really appreciate Deion Giles's efforts to kind of explain how that will be looked into, that I really feel that should be in the plans and in writing before we vote to accept the plans, given the risk to our homes. There are questions regarding ongoing maintenance, and we've been told several times that the police will be able to kind of enforce the curfews, they'll be able to make sure that people aren't illegally using the trails or they're kind of engaging in things they shouldn't be. We've also been told that scout troops will do the cleaning up. However, I'm concerned at that, in the minutes of a meeting made this year, the chief of police made a statement that they do not have the manpower to police the Murdoch Canal Trail, so I struggle to see how with additional funds they'll be able to police the mountain bike trails. Concerns as to why they're so close to property lines, and this has been ongoing, and this is really the crux of the whole matter, is why these trails need to be so close, at times within 15, 20 feet of property lines. Some of the residents, my neighbor Ray Lyons included, does not fence his backyard. It's already used as a throughfare by several individuals and groups that go through there, and he has concerns about that, and I share those concerns. We have a gate to the rear of our property that is potentially at risk of that, and it's just, there's been no solid justification that I've heard that's explained why they need to be that close, given all the land that's further available to the north. There are ongoing concerns with the parking. Applying parking zones and putting up signs saying that parking is restricted is good in principle, but it's not legally enforceable. And given, from last Thursday's discussions towards the end of the meetings needing to close down, it became very apparent that there are plans to use this for events and for competitions, even though we've declined the money from the group that was going to require that every year, that there are definitely plans in place to have those events. Process on those needs to really kind of give some assurances that there will be parking enforcement, and that that will be, the police or whoever will be able to legally enforce those parking restrictions to prevent the whole area being used, the whole block region around that being used as a parking space. And on a technicality, the minutes for that meeting were not made available prior to the meeting, as the city code says, they should have been posted 48 hours before the meeting. There was nothing online for last week's planning meeting.
In the agenda?
The agenda, yeah. Which, the result of that was I went up to the meeting and spoke to some of my neighbors because I was expecting them to be here, and they hadn't heard of it. They knew nothing about the meeting, they'd been watching the town sites, and they'd seen that there was a big planning meeting happening, but there was no agenda associated with that that was published, which kind of denied some people the opportunities to have their voice heard.
Are you saying no notice at all, or just no agenda?
There was no agenda.
Kathy, you know if that's correct?
We can check with...
Thank you, give me the time, sorry.
Thank you. I did have a question for you, I'm sorry. You just wanted to, could you just, you wanted to see appendixes G and H?
Appendixes G and H.
And the three concerns lists were too close to properties, not enough policing, and not enough parking?
And no engineering survey for the water runoff. Nothing that we've kind of seen in print. We've been told that had been some preliminary ones, but that was prior to the open house in November, and that was where I pointed out on the map where our properties were. And Deion and Dagan both said there had been nothing currently in plans for those that they needed to do. So we just kind of want to see that in the plans.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, would anyone else like to speak?
Winchester, 120 North, 1400 East. I would like to address this body regarding the decisions that were made at last week's council meeting to restrict citizens' ability to give input to this body. Council meetings over the last year or so, while they have sometimes gone very long, have, except in a small number of instances, been civil, in order, and have allowed this body to accomplish their work. The action taken last week was justified by statements that council meetings are too long, have gotten out of order, become uncivil, and are not allowing this body to accomplish their work. The action taken, rather than looking at the reality of those claims made or other factors that affect the length of meetings, et cetera, singled out the citizens as the cause of unsubstantiated claims and voted to restrict the ability of citizens to speak. If restricting the citizens' input was an inconsequential matter, a hasty decision perhaps would be tolerable. And I think it's of note that this decision was made without citizen input. However, this decision is curtailing a fundamental element of our governmental system. There are specific reasons that this body is required to deliberate and vote in a public forum. There are specific reasons that the governed should have ample opportunity to not only hear their representatives deliberate and vote, but to voice their input in those deliberations prior to a vote. This deliberation should not only be in public, but should be on public record, available for all citizens to see and hear. Therefore, I call upon this body to reconsider their actions and not restrict the citizens' ability to give input in the process of council meetings. You are our representatives, and I believe it is incumbent upon you to listen to input from your constituents on public record, whether you like it or not. I recommend the following simple suggestions. Only implement a time limit on citizens' comment when large controversial issues require the limit to allow many citizens to have input. Only restrict the number of times a citizen can comment on an issue when the number of citizens desiring to speak requires the limitation. And finally, allow public comment associated with each agenda item that requires a council vote. This will reserve open session for comments unrelated to agenda items and not for citizens to comment, citizen comment related to an agenda item to be separated from the discussion of that item. So again, I call on this body to reconsider the decisions made to restrict citizen input. These simple suggestions and the rules of order previously in our city policies completely allow the city to accomplish its work in an orderly fashion and allow citizens to voice their opinion. Please do not single out the citizens that you represent and restrict their input. Apply any rules of order upon yourselves and the citizens equally. Thank you.
Point of clarification for your information. The decision made last week was to arraign the subject to an actual action because it does need to be adopted by resolution, and that's what we saw last week, where three who wanted it brought forward and two felt like they liked it the way it was. So the actual, while it seems like the actual decision hasn't been made, it really hasn't. It seemed pretty solid vote, yes.
Melvin Rinslow, 71 East, 11, excuse me, 1250 North. Getting my numbers all messed up. I'm concerned about the foothills as well. Being a homeowner to max up to it as well as Brother Row. My main concern is the runoff, as I have one of the steeper hills where the water will be coming down and a few other trails will be going through. My concern is that water coming down. When I first built my house, before I had yard and everything in, my basement flooded, and luckily, we were only in there a month and there was no, there was no grass and everything, and so all the water just came down the hill. Now that we got yard in and stuff and our basement finished, that is a big concern because it was a big undertaking of cleaning all that mess up and getting it all taken care of, and that was a mess that I don't want to go through again. Another concern that I have is the trash and debris of the races that are supposedly going to be happening there. And we already have, we already have a small area up there in the foothills, and with more people getting up there, I'm not, I'm not trying to oppose it because the foothills are for the people to go up and exercise, and I go up there myself. But I think, you know, we're going to have more concern there of trash and debris being left behind and needing to be cleaned up. And the homeowners will be the ones in that area that will want to make sure that we preserve that because that's what we look out of our back windows. One other concern that I have is, being a high school lacrosse coach, we don't have fields here in Pleasant Grove to play on. We go to Linden to play and practice and do everything that we do. We've got 120-some kids in our program, and I would love to have a lacrosse field right here in my backyard, but I don't have that. I have to go to Linden to do that. I choose to do that because the school that provides us or allows us to go there and practice and everything, we just, whoever's going to accommodate or help us, that's what we're doing. And so I think if we're going to allocate funds for things, for the foothills for one club, we need to consider other clubs, not high school programs, but clubs that need places to play and to exercise and stuff here in our own city. The other one was addressed by Brother Row Two as well. I have one more concern. My wife just texted me, and I want to make sure I escape that.
She's sitting in the room.
She chose not to come. But we, you know, it's winter, the ground's starting to freeze. I would like you to really consider of thinking about your choices and stuff and maybe waiting a month or two before we make a decision that will impact us, that's not going to change until February, March timeframe, when we can actually, you know, get the studies back about the runoff or, you know, some of these other concerns that are raised about it and make sure they're taken. My main concern is in our area, there's only two access roads that go into our subdivision, and then if we're going to start having bike meets there, we can't take a lot of cars on our roads because we already have issues with, you know, our, you know, roads needing to be repaired as well. So I, you know, that's all I'd like to say, thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, Jason Cowley, 582 East, 780 North. Most of you know I am here. I just want to address a few things and make a couple of comments about the trail system. First off, I want to say that the majority of the objections that we've heard and that we're going to hear are mostly a "not in my backyard" kind of objection. And while I empathize with that, I feel strongly that there is a greater citizen body that stands to benefit from these trails. I feel that we have gone to extraordinary efforts to accommodate, to study, and to really do the due diligence that are needed for what we're talking about here, which are three-foot-wide dirt trails that don't bring in any additional elements. We've done, we've done a complete engineering site plan, which goes way above and beyond what any other trail system would require, as stated by our professional trail builder who came in and said he'd never seen that anywhere in the country. In terms of the events, we have made the compromise to step away from and deny monies from the Utah High School Cycling League, and so that we would not be tied to any events. Should any events want to come and races be held at these facilities, those are things that would have to go through the normal event process as per any other event, whether it be Little League games or anything else. And those would be open and to the subject of the council as to what the requirements when it came to trash cleanup or police enforcement or parking for those events would all be requirements that would need to be enforced as a separate issue for the event. I personally represent what will be next year, a team of over 150 riders that are all citizens of our city. Furthermore, I represent thousands of mountain bikers, not to mention that these trails will be open to hundreds of equestrians and hundreds, if not thousands, of trail runners, hikers, Cub Scout groups. The property that it's being built on is vastly privately owned, which means that once you cross off the line from the personal property, and we are 10 to 15 feet in or more in most cases into that other privately owned land, it meets all of the easement and other requirements by city code to stay away from other personal private property. As many of you know, we've been at this for quite some time, and to build a trail system through that area actually is going to be improving that property quite a bit. The way the trails are designed, they're designed with a principle called reverse grading, which disperses water and keeps it from channeling down paths where it should not be located. We're going to be revegetating, which will be further dispersing water runoff. And when it comes to the particular elements in terms of the area that has been of some concern for runoff, the engineering firm has studied and looked at that area where the trails are concerned. And where the runoff issues have existed in the past is a known issue that would exist and will still exist regardless of whether the trails go in or not. Again, a separate issue that should be tied to this. I believe that many of the opponents to this park system will be trying to run an idea of delay and death by attrition. As far as I'm concerned, for the group that I represent, we are urgently in need of these trails. We don't have to travel to Linden, we have to travel to Eagle Mountain or farther in many cases to get to where we need to be. I don't think it's showing favoritism to any particular club. If a club, a club coach wants to come and put in the 700 to 800 hours of time that I've put in to try and get this done, I think that they should definitely step up and do that and get a park built for lacrosse or for whatever other sport is good for our youth. I think supporting our youth programs has a long track history of being of great benefit to our, to our city. Lastly, I want to just point out that as far as my club goes... Lastly, I want to just point out that as far as my club goes, as far as the hundred-plus kids that will be a part of my team next year and fifty or so coaches that will be a part of my team next year, not only do we run a youth program, but we also run scholarships and sponsorships for at-risk kids, for kids who are in desperate circumstances. And those are all youth that we are taking and giving a program that would otherwise be challenged in our community.
I'm Danny Rowan. I live at 462 East, 420 South. And I also wanted to address the trail system, but I wanted to offer support for it. Jason talked about it being a not in my backyard issue, which I think is just funny because normally when you talk about not in my backyard, you're talking about prisons and nuclear power plants and trash dumps. And here we have something that's going to be beautiful and quiet. And I, if it were in my backyard, I would love it. So please, in my backyard, if you could build it in my backyard. This proposal has gotten a lot of flack from people whose property is nearby, and, you know, I, I respect that because, you know, anytime our property is affected, we want to make sure that we're going to be happy with that. But like Jason said, all indications are that this is a net positive for, even for them. It'll beautify the hills and also increase property values. I think the real issue here is a fear of change. Change can be scary and we often try to resist it. But change is happening in Utah, in Utah County, and here in Pleasant Grove, whether we like it or not. We don't get to choose whether change happens, we only get to direct how change happens. And this is an overwhelmingly positive change for our city. We look at neighboring cities like Orem and American Fork and Lehigh and even Linden, and we wonder why they have all this development and consequently the funds to do things like prepare their roads. And it's because those cities decided to embrace change in a positive way. We have that opportunity tonight as we consider this trail system. We have the opportunity to put Pleasant Grove on the map, to build something that, that will attract people and businesses to our city. People want to live here and work here because of these trails. We have the opportunity to show that Pleasant Grove is serious about creating positive growth and attracting the kind of people who are frankly looking for jobs at places like Adobe and Domo, because those are the people that are out biking. The concerns from all my observations have been extensively addressed. It is a very small minority of people, and I would say that the overwhelming majority of the citizens of Pleasant Grove support this trail system. And trails are what people want today, especially here in Utah. And I hope the council will unanimously approve this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sasha Welker, 556 East, 1300 North. I just wanted a little bit of clarification and maybe to step back a little bit. It's my understanding that this trail or bike park has been in the city master plan for many years, even before Pleasant Grove High School had a biking, a biking team. And so it seems now that the city is finally getting what they're wanting and what they've wanted for so long. You have private citizens that have been actively involved in helping this process. And so to me, it doesn't seem that this needs to be a vote for people to decide whether it is going to happen or not, because the city has wanted this to happen for a long time. And there's been studies done and support in favor and against, but this is something that the city has wanted in their master plan for many years. Is this, am I wrong? Is that correct?
That's correct.
I don't know what it was put in the best.
Well, the concepts for this type of, shall we say, park or trail system have been discussed and have been identified in a general sense in the master plans. However, the more specific detail and exact locations of it have not been identified. And that's one thing that we're doing tonight to amend our plans so that type of detail is there.
So for many years Pleasant Grove has wanted a bike park. And now's an opportunity that we get to find they have one. And this isn't just for this team or this club or this group of people, it's for the whole city. And I just hope that everyone keeps that vision and that perspective in mind. Thank you.
My name is Mindy Friend. I live at Forest Lake, South 47 East, in Pleasant Grove. And so I am also in support of the, you know, any development that we can have in our community to be able to have an active community for our children. I mountain bike quite often, you know, my notes are, quite often going to Corner Canyon, Lambert Park, and those homes that are around there, I think they highly benefit from having those improvements in our area. You look at the vegetation that they have there and it, you know, the trails aren't going to be right next to people's houses. There's going to be trees there, and I think it's going to be lovely. And so I would encourage those, if it is going to be in your backyard, I would also, again, we'd love to have this in my backyard. But if it's, you know, something that's close to your home, I encourage you, go and look at Lambert Park, go and look at Corner Canyon. And you'll see these big, beautiful homes that benefit greatly from having such a wonderful park in their area.
Thank you.
Louis Cowley, 1066 North, 400 East. I've been to several planning commissions, several city councils, and the motions are definitely running high. I've kind of tried to step back and say, hey, you know, I'm a native to Jason, I really shouldn't be up here. We're almost missing the whole point, I think, here at City Council. I, I feel very strongly what these people are feeling up there. I remember attending city councils and planning commissions twenty-five, thirty years ago as they started to build up that hill. And I didn't want that. I didn't want that beauty taken away so I couldn't see it. I was concerned about runoff. I was concerned about traffic. I was concerned about everything that I'm concerned about now. And I, I'm not saying this to be facetious, I really understand where they're coming from. Just to make it very short, the same issues were there then as they are now. And what we need to remember as a city is we want to do what's right for the majority of the city. All of us at times have to step back and make concessions. I put up the fence in my backyard so I didn't have to see that hillside with all those homes up there. Louis made comment that they didn't put up the fence so they could see it. They trampled on my rights. Now, I'm sure you're looking at it as we're trampling on their rights. But City Council, I urge you to do what is best for the majority of the city. And I hope that all of us can, as citizens of Pleasant Grove, and we all seem to say we love it, be able to accept whatever the outcome is. Thank you, City Council.
Nathan Harmon-Ful, 6 North, 730 East. I live in that neighborhood that's by the foothills and feel myself blessed to be able to be there. Use it all the time, bike, ride, take scouts, look for crystal, crystal pits. It's, it's awesome to have. And now someone wants to come in and make it even better. I'm definitely all for it. I learned something those last year that's even more as my son decided to join the biking team. I didn't really bike. I said, hey, I'll do it with you. If you need leaders, great, let's do that. I learned two things. I'm not a very good biker and I was sort of out of shape. But the other thing I learned was the biking community people and how good a people they are. And what it really did for the youth and kids who got out there who didn't think they could do something, and within a few months have conquered a lot of things. And so I will definitely invite my neighbors to come to my neighborhood and say, come to our park. Come to my friends, come to my park. Because I want the good people coming to my neighborhood. I want good people coming to my neighborhood and I'm going to invite them to come and join me. If the good people are in my neighborhood, the bad people will stay out. And so a lot of the times there's stuff in the foothills that, you know, aren't as good. If there's bikers and peoples up there, they're policing it themselves, there's no really reason for the police department to worry about it. You're going to have bikers and people up there that are going to do it for you. And so I hope that the council will look at it. And it's a benefit for the community, it's a benefit for our kids. And whoever wants to come in, people are going to stop in Pleasant Grove, it's going to be a destination spot to come and bike. And for those of my neighbors, it doesn't matter. Hopefully, we're still neighbors. If I differ in an opinion, and I hope that's the great thing about this country, we can differ and still be all right and be friends. But I want people to come and enjoy what we have. The foothills are fantastic. What a, what a great place to be able to share with people and have them come to our community. And like I say, you're going to bring the right type of people into our community when it comes to the biking community. So thank you.
Brian Fruit, commercial property owner here in city six-six-one, six-six-three, and six-six-five West State Street. I was able to be part of the steering committee to put together the original, you know, pedestrian and cycling master plan that then connected with Linden and Orem and American Fork and High, and Cedar Hills. And I was able to actually sit on the committee with Linden as well. It was awesome to see the foresight and try and connect these trails. So this road would have a cycling path on it that would not dead-end, but would then go to a cycling path in Linden. And then somebody could actually commute and get to work and get their exercise that way. So it's cool to see that this was part of that conversation, that we thought, hey, maybe we could do a little trails park up in the foothills. And to see that that's now progressing and that we're close. So very cool. That trip actually, or excuse me, that committee, we went on a trip to Colorado, and I do believe it was cold for those that, that went. But it was neat to see what they had done and how they had embraced, you know, cycling and pedestrian paths and how people were outside and exercising. So I'm all for that. I'm a ride leader under Jason on the Pleasant Grove NICA team. And to be a ride leader, I actually had to get a background check, which I passed. I had to do some, do a, a online course for concussion training. So in case one of the kids crashed, I could recognize that they had a concussion. Then we had to do a first aid certification, which, which took the better part of the night to get through. There's a rule as a, to be a NICA leader through the organization, you have to have one adult certified rider or certified ride leader for every six kids. And then Jason would prefer to go one to four, so he wants to have a few more adults there. So it's, it's awesome from that standpoint. I've developed a few properties in some of the, here in Pleasant Grove and in some of the other cities. And people and businesses look for a community that has amenities. And this would be an amenity that would draw people, that they would love. And this would be a great amenity to have in this area. My understanding is that there's been private funds committed to build this trail if there's no city funds for it. So from a funding standpoint, to get them built, I don't think that's really much of our concern. The Murdock Canal Trail, if I remember correctly, took twenty-five years to hit fruit. Jason, we've got a few more years. Twenty-five years. But they put counters on that, and they're finding that there's just thousands and thousands of people that use that every day. So it's been a great addition. I am definitely for having the trails and paths up there for people to jog, ride a bike, enjoy, and to use that, that nature.
Doug Zimmerman, I live at 693 East, 100 North, right next to Lynn Walker there. I kind of come in support of many groups. I am an avid mountain biker, have been for the large majority of my life, as long as I can remember. I started the team four years ago, so I can speak with them. For having ridden for so long, I can speak for thousands of cyclists, and I can also speak for the Utah High School Cycling, you guys' operations manager. I know one fear, one concern that's been expressed tonight is, is trash from events. And first off, if there were events, there wouldn't be trash issues. I've been doing this for four years and trash is not an issue. And if it is, it is quickly brought up to every single coach. Number two is the likelihood of having a race here is, is pretty slim. We've run races in a few cities, and cities don't really work for us. The areas are really small. We require just for the teams, the team area, what we call the pit zone, we require two acres of land. That's just for teams to park their bikes, hence that's that only. So we really don't have that kind of space here. So you can ease your minds on events. That would be the largest event you would ever possibly see up there, and it's, it's not going to be happening anytime soon. Even with splitting, we continue to grow and we'll, we'll get back up to two acres in two different regions. The last thing I was thinking about is Brian mentioned, you look at the Murdock Canal, we have thousands of visitors. And I know parking is a huge concern for a lot of people. If you look at how much use the Murdock Canal gets, and how much parking do you see used at those different access points? Parking could be an issue, but I can guarantee you from my experience, from my years of cycling, from my years of going to bike parks, resorts, everything, parking, you won't have parking issues. And even if you do have some small ones, mountain bikers are their own policemen. We don't like our trails ruined, we don't like our trails taken away. And if there's a possibility of a trail being taken away because people are parking, we'll police it. We are very good at that. So obviously, I am in huge support of it. I wouldn't even park, I would just ride my bike to that trail. I think most people in Linden, Cedar Hills, Pleasant Grove, they won't even be parking it. We have the Murdock Canal to go straight to it. It's a great warm-up for us. So I'm in huge support of this. I think it's the best thing we could have, one of the best things we could have for our city, for our youth, and for Congress for bringing people in.
Hello, Jesse again. Dale Rose, 700 North. I'm trying to kind of clarify here that this is not a fear of change, this is not a not in my backyard. I like the idea of having bike trails. I, I enjoy biking myself. I commute to work in the summer in Fogo. I, I'm an IT professor. My job, my, my existence revolves around change and adopting to change and harnessing change with the better. And I, I do believe that done properly, this could be a fantastic opportunity. My concern is what's being done, it's how it's being done. The fact that some appendices were not shown, and I don't know why. There may not be a reason, it may have been an omission, but they haven't been shown. The, this talk of the grading and, and the studies that have been done, but I haven't seen a study. And I, I went to the open house, which was the first I heard of the, the trail proposal. I've been here for five years, it didn't show up in any of the property searches when we moved in. That may not have stopped me if it was there and had this, had the proper studies in there at that point, and we could have looked at that. We, we may still own both property and be here standing up and saying how great an idea this is and we're, we're for it. And that can still happen. It's, it's just, we want assurances that this is being done right, given the risk that's, you know, potentially there of having to go and, and clean up after things. And I appreciate the words that have been said and how that's been explained, but it's some things such as the runoff studies, the maintenance plan that's funded for keeping it maintained and making sure it stays as good as it starts, and, and being able to kind of have complete visibility into the plans and development and those studies. That's what the concern really is right now. It's not what's being done, it's, it's how, and it's assurances. And if we have the time to see those and have a look at those and make sure that everything's being done properly, potentially we could still ground break by the time the ground falls. This is, this is really not a position to change, and I'm not trying to come here and be a stickler in the mud. It, it could be grazing my backyard. I'm, I'm just very nervous at the moment, but it's, a lot of risks attached to it. Thanks.
Lori Williams, 175 South, 100 East. I am also a mountain biker, and my husband is for this, and I am not yet. And it's not because of not in the backyard. I don't think everything, all the questions have been addressed sufficiently. I wrote a couple of notes down, just even from things I've heard tonight. One was when he was talking about the horses on the trail. When I'm on a trail in the spring and there's been horses, they beat up the trail, they beat it up bad, where it's, it's hard to ride. Who, who takes care of that? Who pays for that? Who pays for the spring runoff in some of those areas? Talked about an engineering firm, who paid for that? I, I'd like to know those kind of things. And I'm also wondering where are these studies at? I'd like to see them. And they could be very easy, easily answered, I just, these are questions that I have. At one point, Mr. Cowley indicated that there would be a lot of revenue from having events here. But then he just indicated that there wouldn't be because it's too small and that. And so one of the things that he talked about was the revenue of having these meets. So there won't be that? I mean, that's, that's another question. I mean, that's, that's another question I have. Also the bathrooms, if there was an event there, those bathrooms, that's not sufficient. So I imagine you'd have to bring in portable bathrooms. Who pays for that? Who pays for the stocking? Who pays for the upkeep? Those are just a lot of questions that I feel like have not been addressed. And so anyways, those are questions that I would like to have answered. Thanks.
Evening Council, thank you for giving us the opportunity to address you. My name is Rod Ryrie. I'm, live at, I don't live there yet, but I purchased a lot at 1238 North on 1000 East. My wife and I just purchased a property kind of in an effort to move out of the metropolis that Orem became last week. And we loved the lot. We have fallen in love with Pleasant Grove. A few days after we purchased our lot, we went up and we're taking in our view, we're taking in the site and kind of draining the area home. And a few neighbors approached us. One neighbor asked us if we had heard of any trail park. And, no, what's that about? Well, actually, it's going to be so far south of you, it's just not going to matter. So probably won't affect you. Another neighbor later approached us a few minutes later and said, oh, this is great that you're going to build here. Have you heard about the trail park? Well, don't worry, it's going to be so far south of you, it's just not going to matter to you. So we weren't really sure what was, the park was all about until we went to the first planning commission meeting. And I was shocked when the map came up on the screen and I saw a trail literally on our property. My understanding is that has been rectified, is that right, Dion? So that trail is no longer on our property. But I, I want to, I want to assure the council as well as all the other citizens here that I, I do support the park. I think it's a fantastic idea. I support it in principle, but I do, I do have concerns. I have a friend, a very good friend, who has a son who's a member of NICA. And when I was visiting with him, he said, how are things going with the lot in Pleasant Grove? And I told him about kind of our concerns about the bike trail. And he said, Rod, I've got to tell you, and I'm going to be honest with you. He said, I love NICA, it's fantastic. He said, but after events, there's two things you need to be really aware of, especially if these trails are as close as they are to your home. He said, you need to be aware, number one, of trash, and you need to be aware of parking. He said, trash is, after an event, is pretty substantial. And then parking, of course, being another issue as well. My understanding is, and I've heard from Jason, I've heard from other members of bike community, they indicate that trash is not going to be an issue because everybody self polices. And I suppose that's admirable and I'll certainly take that in consideration. My primary concern is the proximity, again, to property lines. As I mentioned, when I first saw the map, a trail was quite literally on our property. That has been moved, but it's been moved just 10 feet away. On the southeast corner of the park, there's kind of a trail that comes out of the bulk of the park and goes to the southeast corner, almost to Grove Creek Trailhead. I'm sorry, not super familiar, but almost to there. And it does a U-turn and then goes up the Bonneville Shoreline Trail. That trail kind of comes out of nowhere and it passes directly by two homes and then turns and then goes back to the bulk of the trail. You don't see that when you look at your maps. So my question was, why is that there in the first place? And so I asked Jason about that. And Jason said it was the only flat part in the whole 108, is it 108 acres? 100 plus acres where they could have a staging area for an event where thousands of people would congregate just prior to an event. Yes, quite literally in our backyard. And, and so of course, we're very concerned about that. I've spoken with Dion extensively about it and voiced our concerns about, there's about a 400-foot span of trail that just comes so close to homes. And that's our primary concern. There's also a spot of land that is directly north of our land that was owned by Metro at one point, goes later abandoned and is now owned by the bank. The trails do go up to that part of parcel of land as well. My understanding is the city does not have any kind of approvals from the bank to use that parcel of land yet. I would ask the council to just, again, I am for the park, I am. I would just ask that, that we reconsider that one portion of the trail that goes past so close, literally within 10 feet, which I think is, is too close for comfort to a number of homes that are along that 400-foot stretch. The parcel of land that is owned by the bank, I'm in negotiations with the bank to purchase that. And the whole purpose of doing so would be to extend our backyard slightly. But also it would be to create a larger barrier between us and the trail. And by purchasing that, it would cut off all access to that 400 feet. I just ask the council to save the trouble so that I don't have to buy that from a bank. And, and just reconsider that 400-foot stretch. And I appreciate, again, your time very, very much. Thank you.
Oh, I'm Christian Barrow. I live at 797 South 1100 East. I am not affiliated with NICA any longer. I was a head coach for two years. I haven't been the last couple. I am very close friends with Jason Cowley and I've been with him this whole process, both the good and the bad. And I still got your back, Jason. I just wanted to kind of just speak, quickly speak as a citizen who does, yes, I ride mountain bikes, but I also hike, I love fishing, I love all those things, just being outdoors. And it means so much to me to know that the city is going to, is trying to have something like this for both my family, for my friends, for neighbors, for everybody. Several people have said that it would be a wonderful resource. I am happy to hear that so many people that have voiced concerns frankly, are willing to say, yes, we like the idea, let's just try to do this in the best possible way. And I completely respect their opinion. And I hope that we can find, you know, common solutions that we can make this work for everybody. I do. I also would like to point out that I do have a earth science degree from Etoile Valley University that specialized in geotechnical hazards and two years of which were specifically spent on erosion control. And the measures that I've seen Dion and Jason include within the plan is within the best practices that any vermin would use in any land development project they do anywhere. So I, I do understand the fears, especially for people that don't, aren't learned and don't, haven't, you know, been educated in erosion control. But from my experience, this is at that top level. So it's going to be vastly improved from what it is right now. And the only erosion that is going to be taking place is going to be if you have an insane storm, that erosion is going to happen no matter what. So that's an unfortunate situation, of course. But again, in my view, it would improve the current situation. I also would like to just point out that I've been riding my mountain bike on a weekly basis at Corner Canyon in Draper. I have, I know many of the people that live in that area. And it's become such a resource for the city of Draper. They're seeing tremendous development, both in the commercial and the residential aspects. And every single neighborhood there, every single one, is begging the city to build a trail in their own neighborhood so those citizens can access. The homes there are on the market for days, that's it, because they are so popular. Everybody wants to be right next to the trails. It is something that Draper has recognized the potential and the value and they almost can't build trails fast enough to satisfy their citizens right now. So I truly hope that the council votes in favor of this today. I think that we can be just that awesome city as well. I think everyone that has come up and give their opinions, I think it's important for you all to make a well-informed decision. Again, I hope though the decision is in favor. Thank you.
Drew Armstrong, 995 East Center Street. I'm going to just speak to the planning commission's part in this. We heard this, this past Thursday. And we had a lot of discussion and ultimately, everybody voted in favor of it. The concerns that we heard were, a couple of the concerns were erosion, noise, how close is it going to, going to be? And one of the things I talked to Ben about for a moment that was brought up is that currently in that area, kids are, are up there doing rowdy things. And, you know, you want to walk away from the, from the homes a little bit. Above the Bonneville Shoreline Trail, there is Forest Service land. And, you know, up in that area, you can shoot guns and that's okay. But people are going into this area and actually shooting and things like that as well, trying to find a place that they can go shoot. And a couple of the homeowners have had a couple bolt holes. I don't think it's a super common thing, otherwise it'd be a problem, a real problem. One of the things that's really nice about putting this trail system in is that it, it creates a buffer that pushing people that are looking for that type of recreation a little bit further away from homes. Obviously, you know, you say, well, are the bikers in danger? Understand that bikers bike in close proximity to people that are shooting in the canyons all the time. You know, it's not really an issue, but, you know, kids playing in the backyard, this is going to, this is going to push people a little bit further away. And if they're doing something that they shouldn't be doing, when you've got bikers coming by every five minutes, every 10, 15 minutes with a cell phone, they can call. And as far as self policing, I'm sure nobody's going to go trying to fix those, that type of problem by themselves, but they certainly are just a telephone call away from calling somebody who can do something about it. I have a son who has never participated in, in mountain biking before. And, and this past year, we weren't involved with the, the trail building or, you know, planning or anything like that. But he got involved and between the time that this was first presented to the planning commission and, and this last time, we went through all of the six different competitions. We got to go to those and see those. And knowing that eventually we were going to hear this, I, I paid a lot of specific attention. I ended up going and, you know, I got to fly my drone around. That was my extent of, of, of participation with this. And it was really fun, but it also kept me, I mean, it was, you know, the parents appreciated it because now we've got nice video for them to watch their kid when they can't see them. But, but it also made it so that I ended up staying far beyond when my own kid was on the course. And, and I stayed after and I watched what happens for the setup and the, and the teardown and the preparation and everything. And I was there, you know, the next morning, a lot, in a lot of cases. And, and understand that, I mean, I would love for one of these events to be able to come. I'm glad that the city has, has split the, so we're not obligated to, to do this with any group. We're not beholden to somebody else because they invested some money. Because now we can do it on our own terms as a city. And if there is a problem, we can address that. And we don't have to feel like, hey, you know what, you've got us by the short hairs because you participated in this to begin with. But if it doesn't happen, it doesn't happen. If it does, that's great. And I will tell you that, you know, in three of these areas, in these communities that, that have trails that up butt homes and are close to homes, two of them really, where you have to drive right through the neighborhood to get to the parking and things. That Eagle Mountain is one of those, Draper, you're, you're going right through neighborhoods. And I paid a lot of attention there. And, and I, there's no doubt that there are some families that were a little put off by the fact that in Draper, they actually close off a section of the road that's across from the, where the pit zone is. And, and that puts some people out. But I will tell you that, that the city wants NICA to come back every year. They want those events to be held there every year. They, they are very involved with them. And, you know, it's not something that's as big as Strawberry Day by any means. But there are a lot of people that come to the city. And, and it's interesting because I watched people that lived in those neighborhoods. And they've, I, I have no idea because I don't know how many years in a row that held the events there, but I know it's more than two or three. They've been doing this for about five. And, and families that are actually in these neighborhoods that up butt, come down, they want to see what's going on. And so they came down into there and, and I'll tell you, a lot of them are like, I can't wait to sign my kid up for this. There, you know, between Alta and Corner Canyon, I bet there are 400 kids in Draper that are participating in the programs that are available up there because of this. As a real estate agent, I can tell you that people, I mean, people are asking us now, Murdock Canal is a reason to move. My house, I'm one house off of the Murdock Canal Trail. And I would guess that I probably gained, and every house is going to be different, but I probably gained $25,000 in value just by having that trail built by me. And I, you know, I love it. I appreciate that very much. I don't use it as much as I should, but I, I do appreciate that. As far as the trash goes, if a parent is walking away from, you know, through the neighborhood or down the street afterwards, they may see a water bottle or two. They don't see it after all the volunteers, the hundreds of volunteers that are there get done with it by that evening late at night. They, they might see it after 3,000 people have shown up and participated, but they don't see it after it's, you know, left and, and they move on. Because it, you know, the organization as a whole wants to be invited back the next year. And so they do self police pretty dang well. You might not get every family that's participating to have as much of a conscious effort to keep things clean. But after the whole thing's done, it, they're, you know, it, it's not done at that point. And as far as somebody said that they were concerned, I think it was Lori said she was concerned about bathrooms and things like that, they bring in lines and lines of porta potties for this thing. If they, if they ever do that kind of thing, all those things are taken care of. It's, it's kind of expensive to have your, have your kid participate. There are scholarships available and things like that. But there are some major expenses that are involved and, and that's taken care of by whatever the race group would be. And it doesn't matter whether it's NICA or any other group that would want to come and hold a race or an event. You know, if somebody wants to come hold an event, whether it's the motocross, the enduro cross or whatever, they have to meet the, the terms that the city provides to use the facility that the city has. And obviously, we're not going to have that many people come for a day if, if we only have two bathrooms. There's, you know, those things are things that we as a city can go ahead and address. I will tell you that I'm available if you have other questions for, for, you know, how planning commission went. As a citizen, I'm in favor of this. I think it was fantastic to, to get involved and see the, the races actually occur between that time. I, you know, I did go out of my way to go and ask some of the neighbors how they feel about this. What, you know, what do you think? And anytime I, I could tell that somebody was from the community that that was, that was being held in, you know, obviously, if they're from the biking group within the community, they're going to rave about it. But I was looking specifically for, you know, whether it was people at the 7-Eleven that were noticing that there was an increase in the amount of traffic and, and people that were there. I asked those questions and tried to gather as much information as I could for our own good. And I, I think that every one of these cities that has had, had an event like this that I've been able to attend would definitely have them come back. So, thank you.
I just, gee, had the one comment about worrying about food base report wise. So just really quickly, any event organizer has to pay for that. As a matter of fact, Draper City, there is a price, or any, any resort city, wherever you go, there is a price that you have to pay per head to that city or to that resort. And then on top of whatever the city is charging, that's where the city really makes their money. That's why Draper wants us back. It's not because of the money they bring into the stores, although that helps. They make money off of us being there. So on top of them, us paying, having to pay so much per racer, we also have to pay for everything else that goes in, so porta potties, all of that.
He said that there wasn't enough.
Can you address your comments just to the council?
All right, sorry.
Let's not have interaction back and forth.
Yeah, so for, for really anybody who has that same concern, porta potties are paid for by any event organizer. We might not come in here, could, really, really good chance we never will because of our size. But there, but that's just us, right? There's hike, there's trail runs, there's, you can do quite. There's trail runs, there's, you can do question, some sort of question event, there's all sorts of events that can be done by other people. Us, yeah, most likely not. But any of that funds, any of that cost was covered by whoever should, whoever's organizing that event.
I'll say something real fast. So, I don't know, I'm not a biker. I have a bike and I was like, oh, Debbie Hong, 992 East, 100 North. I have a bike, but I had to have knee surgery and that kind of ruined it, but I'm gonna get there. But they're expensive and I think, as I've noticed, all of the bikers and their etiquette, their, I don't know if it's unwritten or written, but when they do take, their equipment is expensive and so they have, they take care of it. And they're not gonna jeopardize their equipment by leaving garbage and junk around that they could possibly hit when they're riding down these trails or whatever. And I think they, because they've invested so much in their sport, they're gonna take care of those trails and make them look nice. And anytime you have a lot of people anywhere, you're gonna get a riffraff, they're not gonna come. So that's just, I'm fully in support of the trail, so thanks.
Hi, my name's David Lusini, I'm at 150 East, 300 South. Just wanted briefly touch on three points and I'll be quick. I'm a ride leader. This was my first year helping the team. And what I got to witness was it transforms kids' lives, my own child included. They're not gonna be able to fit into most of the other programs that we have and this has been a phenomenal fit. But on top of that, the investment from the ride leaders is an hour or two every day to commute back and forth to the locations where we can practice. That's keeping the kids away from a lot of other things as well as parents. So, next item I just wanted to talk about is as a parent citizen, we're commuting, traveling down to, you know, St. George or Lambert Park or Corner Canyon at least once or twice a month. Those are destinations for our family. And I think that what we found this year, there's a large community of families that do something similar. That if we had parks here, this would be the destination, hopping on Murdoch and going up. So just from a parent and citizen perspective, it's just a great fit. We're investing money into other communities that could stay here. And then the last one is as a volunteer for a lot of these NICA events, it's an irrelevant topic, right? The event really isn't pertinent, in my opinion, to tonight's decision. However, as a volunteer, it was commented, there are literally hundreds of parents and adults that go out six, seven, eight o'clock at night and comb through every bit of the trail. And the areas are often left improved from where the families, so just wanted to share some comments.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the council on this or any other topic in the open session? How many people are standing in the hall?
Occupied.
You do have chairs upstairs, if you'd like to come in and sit down. Have a few up front here, a couple back here, a couple over on this side. Okay, anyone else?
Oh, Andrew, 1107 Daniel Drive. And I know you've heard a lot and you're done, but I'm so excited to have the trail because I run up there a lot and it's kind of scary to get tucked behind the hills and you don't know whether you have cellphone service. And I'm excited to get closer to the homes and still have that privilege. And I applaud Jason for everything he's done. One thing I wanted to do tonight though was just tell Cindy Boy, thank you. I don't know if anybody's ever gonna, if we're gonna have a chance to pick her up, but I really appreciate everything that she does for us and for the city.
On that note, I think we'll close the open session.
Well, again, they will be on January 5th. From 4:53, there'll be an open house for Cindy and then her last official council meeting.
Okay, let's come back to our agenda. We progressed at 7:15. We closed the open session. We're now on our non-controversial items, public consent agenda, council minutes and also paid vouchers. Do we have any discussion? Okay. No, there aren't any.
Make the motion that we approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Sid and a second by Eric. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. These are no appointments this evening, presentations. Okay, we have an action item with public discussion. This is a continued public hearing, item 9A, to receive comment on the fiscal year 2015-2016 budget amendments. The Pleasant Grove Redevelopment Agency budget is included in the final budget. The copy of the project amendment is available at the bureau's office and that's been there for a couple of weeks. And I'm gonna turn it over to Denise.
See if we have better success. So I wasn't gonna go any of the items. We did discuss them and detail last meeting and so just asking for the council to approve the budget amendments, like we talked last week. Eight of the items were actually grant reimbursement. Many of the items were budget that was adopted in fiscal 15 that were asked to be brought forward to 16 to be used to complete projects.
Were there any other questions for Denise?
I have one and it was of the, I can't mind it right now because it might.
The Murdoch Canal.
Yeah, Deacon talked a little bit about that. That was on the original project list from last year.
So we're gonna carry that project.
We can bring that forward and if we choose not to do that, then we would come back and ask for those to be moved to another project if that's the.
I don't remember Deacon having that conversation.
I don't think we had a, I don't think I ever came back to the council. It was a discussion, my memory was a discussion with Deion, pointing out that we would be encouraging you use it as contrary to the rules of the trail, which right now is that it closes at dusk.
So, but we're still gonna keep it on the list?
Well, right now, all Denise is doing is moving it forward.
Okay. All right.
Other questions?
I was hoping for a little more explanation of item number 24. This is a sewer impact carryover from Garden Drive, 900 South, 900 East.
Marty, can you mine?
Yeah, so part of the work for 900 South was done, as I understand it, I wasn't involved last year. And we are now doing the portion from about, starting the locus, a little bit below locus on 1,000 South and continuing that section up through now. And so part of 900 South and Garden Drive was done as well last year. So all of that budget, part of it was used. We're now asking for the remainder of that to be rolled over so we can finish the bottom end of 900 South sewer. And we're planning, and that was part of also the street coordination of the planning that we wanted to do, 900 South reconstruction with the streets. That's because this sewer project is also planned under that street to be replaced.
Thanks. Any other questions? Anyone else? Okay, let's open it back up to the public then. It's a continued public hearing. If you have comments or questions on this item, please feel free to come up and state your name and address.
Flint Thatcher, 121, 1400 East. If I'm understanding this correctly, the far right column is showing those as fund balance transfers. So virtually all of these that are not a grant are just a fund balance carryover from the prior year's budget, is that correct?
Yeah, you're using budget authority that you had approved in a prior year.
In the prior year budget.
And so basically, you're using fund balance because you're bringing those forward.
Right, and I just wanted to make sure there were no items on this list that we're approving that are not fund balance carryovers or a grant, a new grant that has been received. Is that correct?
There are a couple items on here that are new. We talked a little bit about the coffee air purchases one, that will be using fund balance in FY16 out of the capital equipment fund, so that's one.
Line 12, is that right?
Uh, yes. So that one is that we'd be using fund balance out of fiscal year 16. And then we have two items, 28 and 29, are using 11,000 from general fund balance out of fiscal 2016. And line 28 is based on increased revenue. So you're increasing the budget based on.
But those are the only new, okay. When I got this schedule, I did not fully understand, I just wanted to make sure it was clear. Thank you.
Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back up here. Council, do you have any further discussion on this item?
We have none.
Okay, seeing none, I will entertain a motion. What? Did we close the public hearing and then item 10A is the actual resolution? So we're done with item 9A? Okay. Thank you. All right. So item 10A directly related, this is the action item. It's a continued item to consider for adoption, a resolution 2015-041, adjusting and amending the revenues and expenditures of the 2015-2016 Pleasant Grove City budget. Am I reading this right? I think it's missing words. Yeah, it's missing a couple of words there. Okay. 2015 budget. The Pleasant Grove City Redevelopment Agency, RDA, budget is included in the final budget, providing for an effective date.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt resolution 2015-041, adjusting and amending the revenues and expenditures of the 2015/2016 budget. The Pleasant Grove City Redevelopment Agency budget is included in the final budget and providing for an effective date. Do we have the date, sir?
Nope. Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Diana, a second by Sid, by voice. Ben?
Yes.
Sid?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Diana?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, our next item is 10B, to consider approval of amending the Pleasant Grove City general plan, amending chapter seven, Parks and Recreation, regarding and adopting the Parks and Recreation Master Plan as appendix G, and regarding and adopting the bicycle and pedestrian master plans as appendix H, and removing text regarding cultural programs, and amending chapter nine, Public Services, adding text regarding cultural programs.
Mayor, of these four items, 10B, C, D, and E, we're just gonna have one presentation on all of them. So if you want to introduce items C, D, and E as well.
All right.
Ken will be taking C, D, B, C, and D, and then Diana will handle item E, but they will, we'll just wrap it all in one presentation.
Okay. Item 10B, to consider approval of amending the Pleasant Grove City general plan, amending chapter seven, did I read that already?
Yeah, you read B already.
C, to consider approval of a proposed amendment to the Pleasant Grove City Parks and Recreation Master Plan, amending text in goals regarding Wade Springs Park and the multi-use trail systems. Item D, to consider approval of a proposed amendment to the Pleasant Grove City bicycle and pedestrian master plan, adding appendix D, multi-use trail system. And then also E?
Yes.
To consider approval of a site plan for the Pleasant Grove Multi-Use Trail System on approximately 28.8 acres located to approximately 1450 north Murdoch Drive in the R120 single-family residential zone, as well as on approximately 100 additional acres located outside and east of Pleasant Grove City boundaries in the foothills. Ken?
Okay, as mentioned, I will be presenting on the first three items and then I'll turn some time over to Deion Giles, who will present information on the site plan itself. These first three items are basically housekeeping items to pave the way for the approval of the site plan for the multi-use trail system. So to begin with, we're looking at two chapters in the general plan, chapter seven and nine. Chapter seven is the chapter on Parks and Recreation. So before I get into the detail on that, this is, this map you'll see a few times here tonight, but this is generally the area that we're talking about, north of Grove Creek and in the Wade Springs Park mostly is where the phase one area will be, but extending quite ways northwards and southwards on either end for the trail connections. So looking at chapter seven, Parks and Recreation in the general plan, there's a few things that we felt we needed to amend or add in there to pave the way for the approval of the site plan. You do have copies of the chapters in your packet. I won't go through all of those page by page, but I will identify those pages where we have specific verbiage changes that we're adding into or amending the plan. So on pages 84 and 85, we have updated verbiage in regards to the master plans and as such would be appendices to the general plan section, or appendix G and appendix H. So just adding that in there as a reference. On section 7.3, page 87, just correcting an address on the old rec center, page 88, adding appendices G and H and adding verbiage on the trail system. And then page 91, we're looking at removing section 7.6, cultural programs. We're actually going to pull this out of this chapter and move it to chapter nine, which is Public Services, which is where it more rightly belongs with the current makeup of our Parks and Recreation Park. So with that, we're also updating the verbiage in the goals and removing the cultural program goals from this chapter. So again, this is housekeeping. We're just kind of updating the verbiage to fit with what we're trying to do with the site plan and we're just kind of cleaning up the chapter, taking out the cultural programs verbiage. So then going to chapter nine, we're taking that verbiage and for the cultural programs and inserting it here as section 9.6. 9.2, we have added a little bit of updated verbiage in regards to city facilities. And I'll just mention that as we reviewed this in planning commission, we determined that there's probably other sections in this chapter, not probably, there are other sections in this chapter that need updated verbiage. It was not our intent to completely review and overhaul chapter nine. It was really, the whole purpose was to look at the multi-use trail system and pulling out a section out of chapter seven and putting it into chapter nine, so we're doing that. And then we realized, oh, we probably need to go back and do some more things in chapter nine. We're going to do that at another time. We're going to, we've given notice to the fire department, the police department, the library, public works, for them to look at chapter nine and do some of the verbiage there. So I guess what I'm saying is don't worry about any outdated information in chapter nine at this time, other than what we're trying to do in regards to the multi-use trail system. So that's basically the amendments to general plan right now to kind of pave the way with what we're trying to do. I will move forward unless you have questions to the other master plans that also are looking for amendments here. Bicycle and pedestrian master plan was adopted a couple of years ago and you've heard mention of that here tonight, of the effort that we had with a committee that assisted with the preparation of that. It was anticipated at that time that this multi-use trail system would go in. There is not a lot of detail in regards to how that would play out, other than there is a concept plan for a bike park, although at this time, it's not necessarily a park, it's more just trails. And so we wanted to have that master plan reflect this current plan. And so what we're doing is recommending an appendix be added to the bicycle and pedestrian master plan. which would be just these three items. Shown here is a larger map of the area of the trails. And then a more focused map for Phase One in the Wade Springs Park area. And then some detail on the trail preparation and development. So that will just act as an appendix to the bicycle and pedestrian master plan. That's all we're asking to do with that one. The next one is the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, which was also adopted a couple of years ago. And there is a section in there for future parks. And it talks about the Wade Springs Park as a bicycle park. Well, we wanted that to be a little bit more reflective of what we're doing now. So a few pages being amended here, just showing an amendment date on the cover. Looking at chapter four, future parks. With verbiage specifically identifying the multi-use trail system. Not a whole lot of change here, just kind of updating the verbiage. And then the goals also that reflect that, that particular chapter and the future parks in that area. Then you'll see at the bottom of the goals is those goals that are related to the cultural programs. Again, as we did with the general plan, we're going to move this information out of the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Those goals that are associated. So fairly simple. All of it again is just basically housekeeping of our general and our master plans so that they fall in line with what was proposed for the site plan. Any questions with what we're doing on those plans? All right, I will turn the time over to Deion Giles. More about the site plan for the multi-use trail system.
Mayor and counsel, first off, I'm going to apologize to those that were here at the Planning Commission who are going to hear a repeat with a few changes. August 13th, we held the first planning commission for a bike park. Since then, we've made quite a few changes due to the recommendations of the neighbors and the community of citizens. One of those recommendations was to not tie ourselves to any event, which we did. We removed this association with NICO, which they were acceptable to. We had not entered into any type of agreement with them. It was just talk at the time. And they've been very actually helpful to us in the beginning of this stage with the trail system. One of the recommendations that came from Planning Commission was to complete the site plan. This included hiring an engineer, all the issues that were brought up in the meeting. And, which we did. We brought on J U B. And we've spent since basically August 14th until about a week ago, actually yesterday, updating that site plan and continue to update that. One of the other recommendations was to phase the trail. We were taking off a big chunk of the first slide that you saw. I need to get that up here. So this is Phase One, which, or sorry, this is the overall trail system that we proposed in the first planning commission meeting in August. And its boundaries were Grove Creek to Cedar Hills. This is the overall map, a little bit zoomed in here. And this is Phase One. So we phased the trail, tackling this portion first. Just due to the proximity to the trailhead. And with Pleasant Grove City owning, you know, a big section there, those 28 acres of Wade Springs. Since Phase One, since we did this, we held an open house November 19th. We had about 40 residents show up. We addressed some of the concerns there. The site plan was there available to review, which was, I think, helpful to some of the residents. Some of the concerns in the first planning commission meeting were, one of the items was, how's the city going to put trails on property outside the city limits? We've investigated that. That requires a county permit, called a zone compliance permit. And that is in process currently. It is currently with their health department. There's the Public Works Department, health, fire and marshal, and community development review that application. Currently, Public Works has approved it, and it is with the health department currently. So we're kind of waiting on that. But that's the, that's a mechanism for us to build a trail outside of city limits. That has to go through that process. The other big landowner is Metro. We've been holding meetings with them quite regularly. The latest was last week. Their task list that they have for me is a couple of pages long. Luckily, most of it's small items. They're in support of this. They support trails. It's a good use of their property. They like the people on their property, the experiences they've had in Draper. They've just had a good experience with lotless vandalism, those types of things. So they actually, they like these types of systems on their property. Another item on, tip this up maybe. Is the drainage, which Mr. Rowe brought up. At the planning commission, we were, you know, we need to address this. This is something that's been historically there for a while. And this is one of the changes since planning commission, we met with J U B yesterday. We will be getting with Dagan and Marty and including that on our site plan, how we plan to address that. So we'll start looking at that next week. One of the other things was a fire break in the same area. We're going to recommend that we do not go in and put a fire break, a traditional fire break, which is a road. We'd like to see vegetation cut down and access for a four-wheel drive vehicle to get through there. But we want to keep as much vegetation. If we make it a road, it'll become a road, and we don't want that in the neighbor's backyard. So. The other issue at the public, or sorry, at the planning commission meeting was the sensitive lands. We've identified two. I'm going to try not to shake this pen out of the thing right here. I'm kind of nervous, but. So right up in this area, there's two, two wetlands. They're not necessarily wetlands, but there are, J U B's investigation, they do have some of those types of vegetation in there. Sometimes when our springs get plugged up with roots and that, the spring doesn't collect it all and it will be runoff. So we've stayed away from these areas. There are also a couple of areas for drainage. One of the bigger ones is right in this area. We'll be installing culverts there. That was one of the recommendations. The way Jason kind of hit it, the way these plant, these trails are designed and constructed, they're a sustainable trail. And so we don't want to do a lot of maintenance on them. And we don't want to encourage erosion. That's something with the older trail systems. And a problem we're actually having currently up in this area, right now, we have a lot of illegal trails being built on Forest Service property. And they're planning on addressing that in the near future. But these trails are designed to handle the water and to not create an issue with them. So one of the other things, a lot of the, that came out of that planning commission meeting was detailed drawings of what we plan to do. This is an example, this is not all the detailed drawings in the site plan. But these are some examples of how we plan to mitigate the off-road vehicle use that's currently happening up there. And then it kind of gives you a little section of the trail itself. One's an equestrian. So an equestrian trail section is going to be wider, cut wider through the vegetation and taller, for obvious reasons. And then the bike, hike, and walk trail will be, you know, two, two foot to three foot wide at a maximum. So some of the detailed drawings and concerns that the residents had were to restrict the access. We've identified these on the site plan and plan to put those restrictions in place. Access issues in the neighborhoods. We'd like to start off with signage. That's what we brought up earlier. And if it becomes a problem, then we would restrict entrance into the park that way. Back up here a little bit. So 850 East, I'm going to hit somebody's head, right here. Oh, whoops, sorry. 850 East there, and then North Murdoch here. Currently there, we have gates there, vehicular gates. And there's access to pedestrians and bikes. We are getting some motorcycles through there. We're actually getting vehicles currently on 850 that are gaining access to this area. We'll use post-rail fence, those types of things. If the, one of the advantages to signage is it allows the residents in this area or over in this area here to gain access through there on their bikes for running. So I live down in this area, and I never go to the trailhead. I, when I run, I'll go through the neighborhood and then up in the foothills. So I think parking will not be that big of an issue, especially since we have no commitment to sponsor a race or be partners in a race. Couple other things were the noise and the curfew, especially at the trailheads. I've spoken with the Forest Service, with the forest ranger there, John Stansfield. And he's given us permission to sign these areas to our specific city codes, which deal with noise and curfew. And then also, we have permission to install security lights in the Grove Creek trailhead, which is something that the neighborhood up in that area has requested for quite a long time. So that is not part of the plan. That will be something the city does. We'll undo that, we'll do that.
Deion, what does that look like?
What does what look like?
A security light.
So we have them, trying to think where we have them. They're very similar to the lights on State, I mean not State Street, but on Second South here. They're more like a parking lot light, like at City Hall or right outside this room right here. They're just about a 30-foot light, very directional down. We wouldn't put any more than probably two in there. It's not a very big parking lot. One of the other concerns was the shooting. This will be signed also, once we create this. Some of the things we've noticed on the Murdoch Trail, once in a while, we'll have a four-wheeler jump on there, especially now, that the gates are open because they're plowing for obvious reasons. But it's a pretty quick phone call to PD. And usually, speaking from experience, even if you're in a vehicle and it's a marked vehicle and your warning lights are on, it's the people's trail. They let you know it. So they do, they do a great job. I do want to address the litter. This was one thing, is the Murdoch Trail came on board that we were real concerned with as staff. And currently, we will do a drive-by two or three times a week for garbage. And we may pick up a half a bag of garbage in the dumpster, in the trash receptacles. You don't have a lot of garbage from these people. They're not like a park where they go have a picnic and leave their pizza boxes. You know, they have a water bottle and they take it home with them. So there's not a lot of garbage on the trail. So that's kind of my, my site plan presentation. As we move forward, upon approval, funding mechanisms will still continue to research grants and donations, and then utilizing impact fees, which are for new construction of parks. As that comes forward. We do plan on utilizing a lot of volunteers, especially on the maintenance end of things. And some of the construction. So, and we've had, need to do a presentation for you on just this last year on Eagle Projects and what the scouts did for us. We always have businesses, we have churches, you know, large groups coming in wanting to do projects. And this would just be a huge benefit for us to maintain. Our staff will obviously do the repairs that are specific to the trail. But we'll definitely use volunteers for the majority. One thing we need to do is come up with a name.
You ready for questions?
Sure.
So I see multicolored lines here.
Yes.
And my eyes aren't as good as everyone else's to notice what the legend says. Can you kind of briefly describe for us what we're looking at?
Sure. So I'm colorblind, so they're all just a different shade. So if you start down.
Do sections?
Sections. Well, I'm just going to do the overall thing. So if you start down here off of Murdoch Trail, this is called a stacked trail system. It's something that IMBA recommends a lot, and there's reasons for that. So if you're coming along here with your family and you have a couple of younger children, they could jump on this yellow trail and ride that with you and do just fine. As you go up the hill, obviously the colors change and those trails get a little more harder. Experience-wise, they're steeper, a little more technical, that type of thing. So that's why you see those different colored sections there.
Okay. This, this line here that goes this way?
Yes.
And then this way here, they're the same color. What do they represent?
So those are the bigger sections of the trail, which would be specific to equestrian. They will be designed for that. That's not saying that equestrians cannot use the other sections of the trail. It's just not going to be as inviting for them. It's going to be like, more like they're up in the canyon or something, hunting or whatever, just kind of going through the trail. It's not going to be as, a trail is going to be wide enough and tall enough. So that's what those are. They're, those are your main connectors.
And then these, these lines here are all the same color. Are they like at the top then part of the trail system as well?
Yeah, so that's kind of a loop system. So this is designed for a practice, this upper section through here, which gives the, those people wanting to deal with a ride, a race, hike course, more of that experience. As this moves forward in the future and goes further to Cedar Hills, that's where the real technical areas are. The hillside's up there, much deeper. So this is pretty flat through here.
And on the long section that runs across the top, is this the old Bonneville Lake Shore Trail?
So currently, we do not have a designation. In our general plan, we identify this as a future Bonneville Shoreline Trail. And that's exactly what we're proposing.
So this system would tie into the system here?
Correct, then it will tie into the Murdoch.
Okay. Down here?
Yes.
All right, so if this then is for the equestrian, and these are for varying levels of bike expertise, can you point out for us where the proximity issues are going to come into play here with the residents?
So the ones that have been addressed are just west of 850 in this area. And then this vacant lot right there, I believe. Those are the, those are the residents we've voiced concern tonight.
Where's, sorry, where's Mr. Riley? Where, yeah, where's he live? In there? Sorry.
And you're looking at acquiring additional property as a buffer?
Correct.
Okay, what's the distance currently between the properties that are along this area here? And say, the equestrian portion or some of these pieces of the trail?
Without having a site plan or a ruder in front of me, I did measure this section right through here. And from the landscaped area, it's 25 feet. This, Mr. Riley, he mentioned that when we first designed this, we were actually rough, you know, we were doing a concept and we were actually on his property. We've moved it to the north and to the east a little bit. But it is probably 10 feet, maybe a little more through that area. From his property line, yes.
Here?
Yes.
And a lot of calls and emails and texts. It's a testament to how hard you, how much good public outreach has been done by a lot of people on this particular issue. And so it's been great to see. And so it's been great to see that. Not all the comments have been universally positive, but most of them have been. And I think it's important and fair to note that what I have heard, the clear majority of the public likes this if it's done properly. But that's an important caveat, in my view. And, and there's a clear majority that has also told me in terms of whether or not they feel like this has been done properly, that they still have reservations, they still have concerns about the process. Just like Tina, you know, attorneys here, when noticing issues were first raised, I too went to look at Royce's certificate of posting to see when the posting was done on the public hearing issues for the planning commission. And if it was posted December seventh, as Royce indicates, to the three public places, that's legally insufficient notice. The notice requirement that we're bound by is municipalities in section ten-nine, eight-two-oh-four, which says, we've got to do three different things. We've got to notice in publications and papers, which we did, within sufficient time. We have got to post it in public places within ten days, with ten days or more in advance of a public hearing. That wasn't, if we had three days, it's less than a third of the amount of time we should have taken to do that posting. And then we are supposed to give mailed notice to affected entities that have interest. And I have had some people call and say that they have had interest, that they've expressed that interest to the city to be kept up to date and that their level of information has been notice of the open houses approached. But beyond that, they haven't had the kind of notices that they would like to have. And to me, that's a non-trivial concern. So my broad question is given the legal requirements that we're obligated by, is this premature? And you spoke a little bit about the health department's review of certain applications, some landowners that haven't yet signed their agreements, issues like that. I'm thinking back to the first planning commission hearing, which I attended. I don't normally attend planning commission, but I attended that one. And, and one of the notes I had was another section of code that talked about the comment from an individual in our city that was saying that there's obligations that we have to have all of the agreements in place before we have legal authority to approve site plans. I think that's section twenty-seven A something. Tina probably knows, I don't, I could probably write it in my notes. But there was a code section that talked about that legal authority. And so my thinking at this stage is, great project, great benefits. A lot of people are very interested if it's done properly. I'm not convinced at this stage that we have done everything that we should have done. And I don't understand why, given the level of scrutiny this project has. I mean, there's been a lot of people that have been interested. And back in that four or six months ago, planning commission, my comment to the city was that we ought to make sure that we do every detail perfectly on this particular one so that we have everything in place. And so that concern to me is sufficiently significant that I'm not sure I can approve by virtue of the fact that I am an advocate of respecting the public, being transparent and following the law. And in this case, I'm not sure we've given the legal sufficient notice that we're obligated to give.
So your, your concerns Ben then were the proper notice was not given and that legal authority is not there because the proper signatures, et cetera, were not in place?
Right.
On contracts, was there anything else?
Those are the broad concerns I have. So again, not about the project. I mean, I hear the concerns about trash and other issues, but I'm concerned about the process primarily.
So Dionne, for some of these approvals, the site plan has to be approved so they know what they're signing on before we can move forward a site, correct?
Correct, so as far as noticing goes, I'm not aware of that. I didn't handle that portion of it way beyond me.
And did you see first-hand notice?
We'll, we'll address notice here in a second. Let Dionne address this portion. So as far as the approval from the property owners, they want to see an approved site plan before they will actually sign off on any type of agreement. We've communicated, like I say, with Metro, they have this site plan. It's currently in front of you. It will be updated with the drainage behind the residences and a few other minor things like where we want to put a garbage can. That's the minor things that Metro wants to see. But they won't take in an agreement until they have an adopted site plan. And so same with the county. The county has an example of our, they have this, what we're looking at tonight as far as the site plan to start the process. But until we have those approved site, approved site plan, there will not be any agreement. So it's kind of chicken or the egg, you know, that type of thing, so.
And we discussed that issue last week at Langton. I appreciate that and the dilemma there. My, my instinct is that given the noticing issues and the fact that we do have pending applications that could get us closer to mutually satisfactory timing to do an approval where we are in better compliance with the law on authority assigned to authorize a site plan, we would be well served to not delay twenty-five years. But who hasn't made that comment in twenty-five years to get the Murdoch Canal through? I don't think we need more delays, but I do think we need to comply with law. And I'm, I'm of the opinion that we can do both simultaneously, give better information to the public, get more information to people's hands so there are not those concerns that we've heard a number of tonight. And also have more of our agreements in place, more of our things been done so that we're not past a site plan knowing that we're immediately going to amend it and not necessarily having the legal authority to pass the site plan to be handled.
So based on what you just said then, we're in December. I imagine there's not going to be a lot of site work done for the next month or two?
Yes, me?
Yeah.
Okay. I just want to make sure I was, I don't want to speak out of turn. I don't want to speak out of turn.
Because I don't know who else, I mean, I could look at you.
Man, it's our project as a city, so. It's not going to be a site work done unless we say as a city.
What I'm, what I'm wondering is plan wise, was there any plan to?
No, we, we will not start any type of construction, site work. Well, we may go in and clean up some things that need to be cleaned up, maybe put in some access controls where we're having the current problems right now with off-road vehicles. And look at the, like I say, the drainage issues. But there will be no construction on this until all the approvals are in place.
So that's pretty much independent of working on the site itself? Those are cleanup items?
Yes. If, if I can address, I think Ben's two concerns. I mean, the second one, I think Dionne already addressed, was this idea that when we approached Metro, they said we want an approved site plan before we're going to sign an agreement. So if our city code says something otherwise, I guess we're not aware. And I think you were, were you quoting part of our code?
Yeah, I was thinking actually of state law. Let me see if I can find my old notes from the planning commission.
So if there's a state law that we've missed and we can reference that, that's fine. But that's just Metro telling us, we're not going to sign anything until we have approved site plan. So we felt like we need to get the site plan approved from the city council to get it in front of Metro. The first one, I think Tina covered. We have the legal notice for our public hearings and for notice. I think we met those. Now, is there an above and beyond that we didn't do? And maybe if that's what we're talking about, that's a little bit of a different issue. But my understanding is we've hit our public hearing notice and we hit our notice for our agenda. So I, I don't think we missed the legal notices on this, on the, on the public hearing for the planning commission.
I read the state code differently there, but did you have a thought?
Well, I was just going to explain that the noticing requirements are twofold. So the, the posting certificate that says he posted in the three public places on December seventh was just for the agenda. The other items that were posted clearly ten days before this were the ones that he put on the website. Now, he doesn't say in his certification that he posted the public hearing portion, but that's standard practice.
It does say, it said on the public hearing.
But it was, but it's.
It's on the city website, state website.
And city website. But it's not, it doesn't say that it was posted in three public places.
Yeah, it was the three public place posting as happening on December seventh.
Or just the agenda, which is the agenda. Just the agenda. That we noticed separately for the agenda and separately for the public hearing. Because a public hearing requires a longer notice time. So those, those things are certified that they were noticed within the proper legal timeframe in November, right? Ten days before it was, it was put in the three places that it was required to be for the public hearing. The certification for posting the agenda on December seventh was only for the agenda. That's a separate requirement. So he's fulfilling two separate requirements and he's done them both. He's done the ten days for the public hearing and three places on the websites and then in the newspaper. And he's done the required twenty-four hours notice for the agenda itself by posting it three days prior in three public places within the city. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I read that differently. I, I took that to be a different explanation of two different dates for the kinds of notice he provided. And the statute clearly indicates that you've got to do all three forms of notice ten days in advance. I read his certification as indicating that he's doing the notice by publication in the papers and on websites, ten days in advance, the notification as posting in three different locations, three days in advance.
We've never done that. I mean, we don't do that with our city council agenda. If we have a public hearing, we, we publish the ten days in advance on the public hearing. But we don't post our agendas to the, to the public until Friday and sometimes even Monday, at least twenty-four hours. So if, if that's being read a different way, that, that's not the practice that we've done, at least since I've been here. I mean, we, the, the public hearing notices have always been separate. And they've met the days, the time required. Are we saying the same thing?
Maybe, let me find the actual statute again. It's section ten-nine-eight-two-oh-four. And I read that as requiring the three locations ten days in advance.
Oh, I'm looking at our local ordinance.
Well, I'm looking at the state law. So what's, what's our local?
So rather than debate that particular item here, I think that's something that can be researched and looked at from a legal perspective. And we can certainly address whether it was noticed properly, et cetera. On the other, on the other action items here, on other concerns here, what other comments do we have?
I want to touch base a little bit on events because I heard two different things, right? Can and can. Could you address that?
Would you like me to?
Yes.
Okay, I'll try and be as clear as I can on events. When originally proposed before this council and before the original planning commission, we were going to be tied to a one event a year with NICA, the National Inter-Scholastic Cycling Association through the Utah High School Cycling League, which is an affiliate of them. Since that time, in order to try and come to a compromise with some of the concerned residents, we stepped away from that. The Utah High School Cycling League was going to provide us just a little bit over five thousand dollars in funding in order to be able to have a yearly event that could come in. We stepped away from that. We, we, we still have the great support of the Utah High School Cycling League. They still love what we're doing. But no longer are we tied to an event. Having said that, it is a city, it will be a city park, a city facility. Just like any other city facility, the city can be approached to, by an event coordinator of any kind. I mean, our roads are even approached to be used for marathons and other things. And so could there be an event there? Possible. There is, there is the, there is the trail system in place to, on which an event could be held, just like we have a baseball diamond on which a baseball game could be held. Judd Zimmerman, who has left, but he actually represents the Utah High School Cycling League. He's a full-time employee with them. And he indicated that right now, and he's the one who actually designs and approves where events will go in terms of, are they big enough to support the size of an event? And he indicated that as of right now, there is not anywhere near the amount of space we need to be able to host that from a logistics perspective. This means team tents and places for bikes and, and parking for an event. So until such time that we have those, the Utah High School Cycling League right now is not interested in holding an event at this point. Could other races, other races want to come in here? Sure, there are trail running events. There's, I'm, I'm hoping there's going to be Cub Scout, Boy Scout events that happen up there. There are smaller mountain bike events that could happen. But again, now it's a completely separate issue. It's not tied to this, to this particular trail system. It's an issue that's based off of whether that event coordinator can come in, speak with the lady who's in charge of it, meet all of the insurance, bathroom, police enforcement, garbage cleanup requirements that the city requires, and should it be big enough, get the approval of the council. So that's a lot of words, but did that cover what you're looking for?
That's at our discretion.
Yes, that's totally.
I think that's what Jason's saying is.
That's what I'm getting at.
There might be a hundred people that want to hold events, but if they can't meet our criteria, we as a city won't allow them to hold the event. Because there is a protection we want for the residents that could be impacted. So if we can mitigate the impacts and take care of that, then we can give the go-ahead. But there's been some concerns raised about events and so we'll need to address that if we get a request for an event. Until that point, it, it probably doesn't matter. If there's no request, it's even not.
Since I'm up here, can I make a really brief comment about parking? Or would you prefer me not to?
I'd appreciate it here. I'd like to hear the comment on parking.
Okay. The, the one thing I'd like to say about parking, I've done quite a bit of looking at parking because we always know that's going to be the hot pocket.
I'm okay with in talking about parking. I wouldn't, I'll check it off.
Yeah, I'll be quick, I'll be super quick.
That's okay, they just have to approve.
Mountain bikers, mountain bikers in general, even any trail user from within the city, it's going to be very silly for them to drive to a place to park. For the most part, everything is connected by the Murdoch Canal Trail. Cyclists, if we live here, chances are, we're going to go up, we're going to bike up and we're going to bike there. If you're coming from outside the area, the first thing any of us do when we go to trails outside the area is get online, look at the trails map and see where the parking is located for those trails. And there's evidence for that through Draper, Corner Canyon, all of those kinds of things. So people are going to come to the designated.
Jason, this is a joke, right?
Yep.
We're the only nation in the world that gets in our air-conditioned car, drives down to the bike store to buy our bike.
Possibly, yeah. Okay, I'm done, thanks.
Thanks. All right, are there other concerns that we need to discuss here as a council?
I've been inundated with too much information, I'm happy, so.
Okay. Anyone else?
Can I say one thing? Sorry, it's me over here.
Definitely?
Oh, sorry. Just so you know.
What, what Marty?
Yes, I say something.
We do have springs up on the side, weight springs.
Weight.
And we will be up there in the next couple of months clearing out some of the shrubs and trees that have started to grow in the spring area. Don't take that as part of this project moving forward and we're doing anything. I just know that I've got crews assigned to go up there in the next month or two to rub the area. And it's not anything associated with this plan.
So maybe the question was already asked. I'm glad you said something. Does this project affect our springs?
We've worked around that with all of the trails so that it doesn't affect our springs.
So the water is?
Actually, we're going to install a six-foot chain link fence around the water protection area.
Yeah, we'll have to protect the area with events, but the trails do not go through the spring collection zones.
All right, any other questions or concerns from council? All right, seeing that, I do think that what Ben raised is a showstopper if in fact this is the case. So I'm going to turn to the attorney and say, what's the deal?
So if you look at ten-nine-eight-two-oh-four, notice of public hearings and public meetings, it says, and what Ben was referring to, is that each notice of a public hearing under this section shall be at least ten calendar days before the public hearing and shall be, one, published in a newspaper of general circulation in the area, which we've complied with. And number two, published on the Utah Public Notice website, which we've complied, which we've complied to. Mailed to each affected entity and posted in at least three public locations within the municipality or on the municipality's official website, which we did. And that's in the certification of posting. So I don't see a problem with the notice that has been provided under ten-nine-eight-two-oh-four, the state statute.
Point B, specifically, have we mailed to the affected entities?
Yes, we've got verification of mailing in our files.
So we've mailed to?
We've mailed to affected governmental agencies and property owners that were directly affected by the plan and also property owners within three hundred feet.
Okay.
And then as far as notification on the city's website under meetings is not a requirement that you just listed?
Correct.
All right.
It's a, it's like I explained, it's separate. So the, the notification that we did for the meeting agenda itself was complied with. And then the notification for the public hearing item that was on that meeting agenda was a separate issue was a separate issue and it was noticed appropriately per se to the state code.
Okay. Okay. So seeing no other objections from our legal council, I don't hear anything here that's preventing us from moving forward on the action that's in front of us. Is that correct? Is that a yes?
For staff, yes.
Well, and yeah, so this is like a fluid document where when the amendment's coming, we're bringing this back to the council review, does it need to go to planning commission first? And will there be a public hearing on the amendments?
So Tina's question, I follow what she says to do.
I'm directing to bring it back.
Yeah, I would imagine with the next month or so, we'll be making these minor modifications addressing the drainage, Metro's specification, if they want us to add to the site plan. And prior to Metro's agreement, we would bring that back and move forward at that time with amending the site plan.
And will those amendments be public hearings, Tina?
For the site plan?
Just, yeah, if any amendments that come back regarding.
The site plans aren't normally public hearings. So the site plan amendments won't be, but if there's any other additional amendments to the general plan, then that will be a public hearing.
All right, I just wanna make sure that the procedural issues that are legal have been addressed. And as stated by our council.
I think that's correct on the notice issue, particularly with the indication that's not in the certification that mailing went out to affected entities. If that's the case, I'm comfortable with the notice. I'd love to visit with some of the property owners within the specified area, make sure that they did get that mailed notice. But that's comforting to me on that issue. The other section of code I was gonna read to you, Tina, from my earlier notes, let me pull this up again, about the authority to enter the agreement to begin with this, to enter a site plan. My device will load. Section 27.
Is this state code?
This is state code again, 1727A102 is the section that talks about land use authority.
17 is normally reserved for counties, not cities.
Right, and that's the point, this is county land. Some of the land that we're talking about making the site plan to is county land. It's not within our municipal boundaries.
Correct, it is not. And that's what the zone compliance permit is with the county.
And that application's pending, but it's not finalized.
Pending our site plan approval.
They don't wanna sign up on something that hasn't been approved by the council.
That's an issue with both county and Metro water, or just?
Correct.
Okay. That's news to me, thanks. So I'm not sure that I'm comfortable with our position that we've gotta stick our neck out first and violate. In what I perceive, let me be circumspect in the way I phrase this. What I perceive as contravention of state law because of the chicken egg problem.
Okay, settle down, there's a way to resolve this, right? It's pretty simple. Legal council hired by the city to represent the city passed a rule on this, and she has ruled. So if somebody wants to come back and take it up after the fact, they're welcome to. But right now, our legal council, which is not us, it's Tina, has said that we are in compliance.
Well, his question is on Title 17 with the county thing. And that, that again, that's not a municipal requirement. It has, it's the state code governing county actions. And so I don't see where that's our concern right now. I mean, we're looking at the site plan, and then if the county, if we're applying to the county for approval, if they want to raise this issue of having all the agreements in place before they grant us that zoning approval, that's okay. But they're telling us, we have to give them something to rule on, something to look at, which is an approved site plan. So they're the ones that are making the requirement for us to submit this to them. And 17 is not binding us in any fashion. It's binding the county when they consider the application. So that's an issue for them and their attorneys to be worrying about. I don't think that's an issue for us to be worried about.
So as far as the county goes, trails are, what's the right word I'm looking for? Acceptable. They don't need like a zone change, they don't need a public hearing, those types of things. It's all administered by administration. So it's an approved or an allowed use of their, of the county, yes.
Well, it's an approved use. Unless you go to the worst-case scenario where we put the site plan, it comes back, they don't sign up, we make an amendment, we do some adjusting. That's what the amendment process is for, is that correct? But they'll have something solid to approve the plan from that, from what we're doing tonight, we can move forward. But it's a fluid document that we can adjust and amend and whatnot for the public process.
The county has their rules to follow, it's not our job to tell them what they need to do. If they're telling us, this is what you need to do, we're gonna do it. If they're not following their own rules, that's up for, somebody can go at them and take it up with them. We've approached them, this is what they're telling us we need to do, that's what we're trying to comply with as a city.
So I would like to make a motion, but I would like to know how, if I should do V, C, D, U altogether? How am I doing this?
They need, they need to be separated, yeah.
So are we all right if I make a motion here?
Yeah.
You can, anyone can make a motion, doesn't mean it's gonna give a second, but yes.
So I will start off then, by making a motion that we approve, that we amend, sorry? That we approve amending the Pleasant Grove City General Plan, amending Chapter 7, Parks and Recreation, Regarding and Adopting the Parks and Recreation Master Plan as Appendix G, and Regarding and Adopting the Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan as Appendix H, and Removing Text Regarding Cultural Programs, and Amending Chapter 9, Public Services, Adding Text Regarding Cultural Programs.
Okay, we have a motion for approval by Diana. We have a second by Eric. This is not a resolution, all in favor? Aye, and the opposed?
I'm opposed, and I'll state for the record that my opposition is not based on substance, but on procedure.
Okay, so we have four in favor and one opposed.
And then I'd like to make a motion that we approve the proposed amendment to the Pleasant Grove City Parks and Recreation Master Plan, amending text and goals regarding Wade Springs Park and the multi-use trail system. Second?
We have a motion by Diana, a second by?
That's Cindy.
Cindy? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And the opposed?
Opposed, and I will state for the record that my opposition is based on not substance, but perceived concerns about procedure that are unresolved.
I'll make the next motion. I'd like to make the next motion that we consider approval of the proposed amendment to the Pleasant Grove City Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan, adding Appendix B, Multi-Use Trail Systems Map.
And I'll second it.
We have a second by Sid. All in favor?
Aye.
And the opposed?
Opposed, and I'll state for the record that I don't have an issue of substance of the proposal. I think it could be a fantastic conspiracy. There are additional procedural things I would like to see done.
I'll make the last approval of a site plan for the Pleasant Grove Multi-Use Trail Systems on approximately 28 acres located approximately 14, 15 North Murdock Drive in the R120 single-family residential zone, as well as on approximately 100 additional acres located outside and east of Pleasant Grove City boundaries and uphill areas.
I'll say it, well, who wants it?
You guys. Motion by Sid, second by Eric, all in favor?
Aye.
And the opposed?
Opposed, and you know what I would say?
Yes. Procedure. That air conditioning feels real good right now.
No wonder that, Murdock Canal took 25 years.
Okay, I just wanna say, I'm really pleased with the council. This is, it's been a good discussion. We've had input from all of those that have come out and discussed it, it's been rather peaceful. I think this has been good, it's been, the horse is dead. It's been beat to death. Now, let's hope that we can finish up on these outstanding items and get through what we need to so that the thing can go all the way.
Can I ask a quick question? Jason, how, can we start the thing, how long did this take?
Just over, what, just over 18 months. I think I invested about 800 hours.
Thank you.
Thanks, appreciate it. Appreciate all of them. You're welcome to stay, you don't have to. If you're not gonna stay, make it quick. All right, item 11 for discussion, nothing. Item 12, discussion of January 5th, city council. I see a reservation on it, is it up here? I do not have a posted reservation, and in order of procedure, can't do this. I'm so sorry. It's the actual post. All right, discussion of our January 5th meeting? Kathy, can you put a January alert in there?
No, you're.
Yeah, so there's no agenda. Okay, we have nothing to discuss on that one, other than that we will have a thank you farewell for Cindy. Best wishes for other plans. All right, let's go through our business. Anything, Libby? Okay, coming over here, Ken?
Nope.
David? I'm gonna get the names. Dion?
Heaven knows.
Marty?
Did a nice job, Dion.
Dave? Mike? Doctor? Nope. Okay, Sherry?
Heaven just. We finally got the elevator, man.
Yes! Awesome. That is great. Congratulations.
Sherry, what is that?
It means we can finally start living on it.
We're gonna hire an architect and start designing the elevator.
It's a 808 compliant library, I love it. Anything else? Okay, Denise? Scott? Tina? Dana? We signed the plaques, if anybody has them, please, okay? All right, let's come up here. Kathy? Eric?
Okay, who'd I tell? I told Scott I wasn't gonna say anything, but I attended the Yorby Have. I attended with Mayor Curtis, but on a dinner, and then they hosted the Nutcracker, the Utah Regional Ballet, which I really did, always thought was the ballet of West, right? It's the very first ballet I've ever, ever gone to, right? And I was impressed with the talent and the performance. And so you have that on camera, and Mayor Curtis, I enjoyed the ballet.
Thanks for taking one. We appreciate it.
I'm not gonna say anything, Cindy, sorry, I wrote it all down.
Thank you, and I haven't read it till I can read it and cry at home.
All right, Diana? Nothing? Ben?
I think we're good, looking forward to the party. I wrote some things down, Cindy, too.
Sid?
Start a couple of traditions here in Pleasant Grove. With Eric and his wife, and my husband and kids went to best Christmas pageant ever, the first Christmas play ever by Center or Youth Theater. Well, not even youth, music players. Okay, awesome, that needs to become a tradition. And then the choir at the high school, first time we know how many went to choir, went to that. It was like Broadway. So we have amazing arts in our community, we just need to make sure we highlight those and go to them. So that was some fun traditions to start it, so. And then if we don't see everyone, just Merry Christmas and have a safe and happy Christmas and New Year, so. Because we don't have any more meetings, right?
Not unless there's an emergency. Okay.
And Cindy, I'm gonna talk to you on January 1st, so.
Okay, nothing?
Really?
Yeah, thank you for all the gifts and Christmas, and everybody have a Merry Christmas.
Do you have anything?
Well, I just have one thing I wanna throw in. Tomorrow, we open up our fifth theater. It's in Evanston, it'll be a first run, and we'll be playing Star Wars. Love those trips. I'll be leaving tonight, Sid?
Yes.
From now until Saturday? You're up.
And I'll pop with that.
I'm sure you love all of this. Sign the plaques, I don't think there's anything else in the calendar.
One more thing, I forgot. Thank you, Street Snow Remembrance Guys. Amazing.
Thank you.
Okay, we have our gathering next Tuesday at the Derringtons. No karaoke and no what? Sid volunteered to be in charge of the game.
I'll be there.
That's okay.
So I don't know what that means.
It will not be recorded.
Oh, I don't know, I have last year's recording, I'm here in jail.
I think last year's was recorded, and that needs to be eliminated.
No, I'm taking every, all of my secrets.
Seven years.
We do have an executive session there.
We need a motion to go into executive session to discuss pending or reasonable imminent litigation.
I made the motion that we enter executive session to discuss reasonable, imminent litigation.
We have a second. All in favor? Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for coming and supporting. That's just amazing.